I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Lauren, for it. Making me look up more. Uh, roll call by clerk.
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeny.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Manel.
Here.
White.
Here.
John.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here.
Uh, public comments, uh, from the audience or on Zoom? Uh, who's handling Zoom tonight? You are doing both, double duty? Okay. Uh, is there some people on there?
There are.
Any hands up?
No hands up.
Okay. Uh, any public comments from the audience or social media? Hearing none, let's move to number four, public hearing. Open the public hearing. Um, consider amending the future land use map found in map three dash one of volume two, vision and directions of the village's comprehensive plan for lot two of certified survey map one eight six seven zero, located in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section twenty-three, township twenty-eight, north range eight east, village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin, pin number one nine two, two eight zero eight, two three four, zero nine eight seven. Acknowledge the planning commission recommendation, resolution number two zero two zero dash PC dash zero zero three. A resolution recommending adoption of the components of the comprehensive plan of the village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin, consisting of amendments to chapter three, land use specifically map three dash one, future land use of volume two, vision and directions.
I'll move to acknowledge the plant commission recommendation, resolution number twenty twenty dash PC dash zero zero three.
Second. Motion by White, second by Feeny on the discussion. So, did I hear something back there, Nate? Nope, okay. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Close the public hearing. Ordinance number twenty dash zero one seven, in order to adopt components of the village's comprehensive plan consisting of amendments to the future land use map found on map three dash one in volume two, vision and direction. It doesn't feel like we're in the the right flow, does it?
Well, I think you just have to ask if anyone has comments.
Yeah, okay, alright. Anybody have any comments? Hearing none, do we need to adopt it, Jennifer? Or are we done already?
We have to approve the ordinance.
We do, okay. Uh, hearing no discussion, uh, looking for a motion. Move to approve. Move to approve by Feeny.
I'll second that.
Second by Manel on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number nine, minutes from the previous meetings, eleven sixteen twenty twenty, board of trustees, what's your pleasure? Move to approve. Move to approve by Feeny. Second by Barb, uh, excuse me? Yeah, Ermeling, yep. Uh, on the discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Reports, minutes from boards, committees and commissions, number ten, building committee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. White.
Just to note that the building committee needs minutes that are in there have not been approved by the building committee yet.
Okay.
The funds for December sixteenth.
Okay, we should leave that alone. Uh, let that go back to that committee.
Our we motion, motion to table until the January meeting for, uh, for approval.
Motion by Feeny.
I just the sixth thing, point of order.
Yeah, point, point of order.
He can just skip the one minutes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And approve the rest if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, motion was drawn.
Okay. Uh, we're looking at finance.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ermeling.
For acknowledging.
Acknowledge, second by
I'll second that.
by Manel, anything on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, uh, eighteen, joint plan commission and ETZ.
Move to acknowledge.
Move to acknowledge by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, no more?
I want to do a point of order.
Yep.
In regards to the building committee, are we not going to approve the other minutes or and with exception of that one well, of the one minute that what?
I was gonna just say the same thing, we can approve the minutes with the exception of those.
Of sixteen. Right. Looking for motion by
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Zhong, second by White. Anything on the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, reports from departments. Uh, Keith, you have anything? Are you ready just to go blue, uh, blue?
Well, I
Go ahead.
And I did my report in the packet.
Okay.
Friday got away from me and I did send it out on the weekend to, uh, all the trustees, all, uh, directors and, uh, building committee members. Along with the frequently asked questions in their latest and greatest form, uh, for the building project that is. Uh, received word today that the mailer has been delivered to the post office, so that will be in boxes perhaps as early as tomorrow. Uh, we did have a mock-up of a sign for the, uh, former G B photo sign or site, uh, as our future municipal facility site. So, uh, probably getting that in production here shortly and get it up. And we, later on agenda, we have the, uh, demolition project, uh, for our action on a ward of a contractor. Um, I mentioned we're working with From the Forest, there's an item on the agenda tonight, uh, for that relative to interpretation of that, uh, purchase option and development agreement. Uh, that was negotiated back in twenty eighteen. Um, I guess we had a few hiccups on the white line project, but, uh, the, uh, the error on the sign on Ross Avenue, I guess it's been temporarily corrected, it's gonna be permanently corrected within face.
If I could say something there, so I called, I talked to you and Jennifer and they, they knew it. And, uh, over the weekend, the arrows were reversed, so they were corrected. And I'm talking, wow, this is great, one day, and they got this done. Now today, the signs are missing.
Well, they were, they were gonna put
Yeah.
the, the sign needed to be replaced.
Oh, okay.
The arrows were just put there temporarily.
Oh, I got it. But at, at least it was extremely quick, uh, recovery, so.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I was gonna walk my dog, yeah, wherever Shane lives, you know, so. Cause it pointed to the dog park over in, uh, the Freeman addition, so. Anyway, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Alright, so otherwise, I really have nothing else to add.
Okay.
One, one thing, I guess, speaking to trustee White earlier today, uh, to give Valerie Parker a, uh, a, some recognition, I guess, in terms of all of her time and effort put into putting the building committee minutes together, there's a lot of material, a lot of discussion in there to capture, so. I should have given her that, so.
Okay.
Let me give her a recognition on that, so.
Yep. Okay.
Thanks, Valerie.
Yep. Uh, number twenty-four, I, I know it's not in blue, but did you have something to talk about?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add that, um, we have begun the employee review process.
Okay.
Um, those went out to, uh, department directors today, so we won't begin that process, so we probably won't have that finished till the beginning of February.
Okay.
And then the only, only other comments I have is under new business for the, um, the, uh, L W M M I proposal for insurance.
Oh, okay.
Um, I can't, it came in with new numbers, so I just kinda wanna explain to you what the new proposal is.
Okay. So that'll come up at a later.
Under new business, yes.
Okay, oh, new business, gotcha. Oh, I did see that, yep. Alright, um, so you brought up the reviews, when does that come to board then?
Well, Keith, I mean
Well, we're talking about a H R, we're planning to have an H R meeting in January.
Yep.
February.
Um, I guess as far as recommendations, then they come out right in February.
Okay. Alright. Alright, finance, Jessica, you on?
I am on, I have a report in all the packet, um, is there any questions on that report?
Anyone have any questions for Jessica?
Otherwise, I wanna let you know that text collection season is going really well, we have a few people that are a little perturbed that we won't just give them a receipt, but at this point, everyone has been pretty reasonable and just dropping off their envelopes to get a receipt in the mail.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for Jessica, none? Uh, Lauren, go ahead.
So, I don't know if anybody has, but I included a note in my payment that please email me a receipt and I got it within twenty-four hours, so. It's
That's great.
So it worked great.
It does.
Maybe we wanna tell people if they wanna receive that they might include a little note with an email address.
Yeah. Versus having it mailed to them, yes, okay.
Sure.
Much quicker.
Yep, okay. You dropped something there, or?
Yeah, I think I dropped.
Uh, twenty-six, fire and EMS, I don't see anybody here present. Uh, Parks, it was in your packet, Parks and Recreation.
Um, Sean, I just had a remark on fire and EMS.
Yeah.
I requested for a report or a presentation from, uh, Safer in regards to the changes that they've made to obviously, you know, to, uh, uh, because obviously we as a village brought up some concerns, um, when can I expect to be?
I, I will have that for sure, the next one, this one was getting packed up so tight that I should have let you know because that was your request, but that'll be in January.
Wonderful.
I apologize, that's my fault.
And I do have one other thing.
Yep.
Today I was driving, on Camp Phillips' cell phone and EMS was having to honk their horn because their siren wasn't working in their ambulance.
Oh my gosh.
So. Well, one of them, it, it wasn't working in at all, and then all of a sudden it got to the point where you heard a little so literally they were honking the horn to go through the intersection, so. We need to make mention of that or some find something out, cause then there was a semi that just about took them out.
South on Camp Phillips?
Yep. They were going on, uh, Weston Avenue.
I'll make that call. Thanks. Uh, Parks and Rec, Sean?
Um, I do have a copy of my report in the packet. As you know, we don't have any snow, so there's no progress on the ice rink at this point. Uh, once we get some snow, we should be able to get it up and going within a couple days, but um, right now it's, we're just, uh, taking advantage of the warm weather and no snow to get some other projects done.
Okay, that'll do it, any questions for Sean? Thank you, Sean. Uh, twenty-eight, Jennifer, planning and development. Anything else you wanna add?
Uh, just that Tom does have a late finding signs, uh, project update in there, so if anyone has any questions on that, I think he's online.
Okay, I, I'm, for one, I'm noticing the signs and I like them. Um, I'm getting some questions, but all in all, it's just cause they're new, a little bit of change. But I like them, I think they look good, they'll help a lot. So, thank you. Uh, twenty-nine, police, chief?
Uh, sixteen hundred and three calls for service for Everest Metro in the month of November, twelve hundred and seven of those were in the village of Weston. Have a couple staffing updates for you, Captain Shane Heilman took a position with North Central Tech as the new dean of s- public safety. He will start, uh, January fifth, his last day with us is January fourth. A little bit unexpected, but, um, he's getting more pay and more time off and I know he'll do great, so, uh, Sergeant John Rusnick has been promoted to captain and we will be going through a sergeant promotion after the first of the year. We have, uh, a retirement coming up, February first, Officer Brenda Polowski will be retiring. Um, so we have three, we will have three vacancies by February first, we're going through a hiring process currently, we have more interviews tomorrow. Um, we have some pretty good candidates, so we'll see how tomorrow's interviews go, and the building project is coming along great, so.
Good. Uh, was Brenda planned or unaccepted?
Yep.
I've always enjoyed, uh, my discussions with her.
He and I had her for Darren fifth grade.
Yeah. Yeah, she was, uh, along with Lauren and several others, she was at, uh, oh, just twenty-nine quite often, so usually
Building's in front of the store.
Usually in the liquor department, yeah. Alright, thank you, chief. Any questions for chief? Alright, thank you. You have a meeting tomorrow at three o'clock? Uh, thirty, public works, Michael?
Um, there's one thing I forgot to put in there is last week, we did have our first, uh, water main break of the year. On Alderson Street by the high school, but, uh, we will take care of it with our staff pretty, pretty quickly, so. Hopefully that's
Okay.
one of, uh, hopefully only like one or two this year, so we'll see.
Hopefully one of one.
Yeah, one of one would be great. Um, otherwise, yeah, a couple of dates on some of the capital projects going on and then, uh, a few other items later on in the agenda, but.
Okay.
If anyone has any questions.
Any more questions for Michael?
No, but I just wanna say the roads by my, uh, neighborhood by Western Elementary looks great, so I really I really appreciate the sidewalks that we're adding in, it's definitely great and the road's perfect, so.
Yeah, good.
Alright.
Um, you know, as long as you're on that, uh, the, the Kennedy Park area that's gotten really done, is that what we're gonna expect up, uh, at Kirk and Doug and all those up there? Eventually?
Uh, hopefully.
Yeah.
That kinda comes down to what the D N R ends up approving for the stormwater design.
Alright. Thank you. Uh, thirty-one, uh, no blue, but Nate, you wanna add anything?
Yes, I didn't have a report, but, um, just was busy adding a lot of content for the building project on the website, um, for days, I believe, live now, so. We have a couple kinda waiting to go, but feel free to go take a look.
Yes, pretty good, I, I've been on there a couple times. Um, if you've noticed, uh, our cameraman is not here tonight. If you all know what all, with some, uh, COVID, uh, emergency money, Nate and the staff, you know, whoever was able to buy and purchase that equipment, put that online, you know, so that we're, we're, we're live right now, right?
Definitely it'll go live.
And what was that every year, what was that contract that we had with them? How much, two to three grand, wasn't it?
I wanna say it was about three thousand dollars.
Yeah, well, three thousand, so. That's a nice savings there, so, anyway, it'll be nice. Thank you. Uh, work product transmittals, thirty-two, November building permits. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zhong.
Second.
Second by Feeny. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, thirty-three, November budget status report.
Motion to acknowledge.
Motion to acknowledge by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Ziegler. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, consent agenda. How do you wanna handle?
Um, I guess I would like to pull out number thirty-six.
Oh, thank you. Thirty-six, and then you wanna make a motion for rest?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second it.
I've motioned, um, to, uh, approve, uh, ev- all on the consent agenda except for thirty-six. And seconded by Zhong on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, uh, Barb, I'm gonna let you start off with thirty-six.
I guess, I mean, I know Eddie Yeager was, you know, with the, it lived for the, in the town and the village for years and was a very active lady, um, but I guess where do we where do we start with this?
Well, if, if, if you want me to respond, on the planning commission, uh, I, I was actually very excited, uh, I, uh, I actually spoke up about it because I actually thought, uh, the family was here. I, I, uh, I, I understand your question and normally, when I used to go, uh, well, I shouldn't actually say it that way, but when I went to church, we had a lot of arguments at church about that. But here in the village, I mean, look at this full cycle of this woman, I mean, a, a, a daughter, a mother, a grandma, a, a friend, a lifelong resident, ninety-four years age, love baseball, a- and I understand your point, but, uh, I, I thought it was just a beautiful request, I'm not kidding, when I read it, I read it several times and I, I actually got goosebumps, I actually had a little tear that it came around full cycle that the family is, is requesting this. Um, I actually offered if there's a fund, you know, I, I would actually help with it, but, but the rest of you, you know, maybe we have to pull together, do we have something together? On how this works, Jen? You know, is there, is there some guidelines or? You know?
I, I could speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Sean, I'm sorry, okay. I know who had it.
So there, so there is a document that was put together
Yep.
by the park director committee, um, and it's just, uh, basically gives you the process to, um, submit a memorial for requests, so.
Okay.
If you want a little background, uh, we did start to put again, put together a document, um, like a full intensive document on memorial requests, um, and the board actually asked to not do that.
Oh.
Um, we had spent some time on it, but they said they'd rather actually just see each request individually because we don't see that many. They didn't really wanna see the time invested in putting this long lengthy document together and would rather just see requests come, uh, individually to the board to make all decision on them.
You know, if, if I can go and so, anybody else can talk, but to that point, this board changes frequently.
Yep.
And, um, you know, each, each board could be different, I mean, I, you know, I boy, that'd be a real tough one for us to swing here without having something in place, so I would actually be in favor of some kind of protocol for that, uh, you, you have your phone up?
Uh, and, and Director Oscar Brink goes that I was the one that was really, uh, pushing for us to have some sort of guideline and the board did, the board, mark you wrong there too, cause I don't wanna I don't wanna accuse anybody of anything, but, uh, um, the board, uh, under President Wally, uh, Sparks as well too, spoke heavily against it, if I recall during the discussion, so. Um, I, I would be supportive of bringing it back up, cause I know, uh, Director Oscar Brink actually put a lot of effort into developing a, uh, kind of a guideline to bet out, uh, the whole, uh, memorial or the memorial benches or your dedications here, so that if there was any request for any memorials, um, plaques or something to be put up, it would be for specific individuals that has made a huge contribution to very community and not just the average, you know, I'm not saying that they're not important, but just bringing that up as well, so I, I would not be, uh, against bringing that up again, but then I guess the question would be, what are we, uh, are we still gonna go ahead and discuss, approve, uh, the, the memorial proposed by the Yeager family and then, uh, and then, or are we gonna put, postpone that and come up with a process and then move on?
Well, the planning commission unanimously, uh, approved it. I, I, I don't think we should hold that one up. Um, but, um, you know, to the tune of someone that's I, 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 I'm gonna use your word average. You know, the whole community is taxpayers, the whole community is our bosses. And, um, I, as long as that document is produced with no bias and, and no favor, you know, to anything, I, I, I think staff would easily be able to handle that to us and I would actually say yes to that, and if I said no, shame on me. Maybe I didn't, uh, understand the whole question, but, uh, and I certainly could have, but I, if I did, I'm switching gears and I, I think staff should handle this. And then however the approval, you know, gets done at board level or something, or have it go to Parks first and then come here. But, I mean, cause the more of, you know, I can see Barbara's point. You, it's something we're gonna have to mull around, you know, stop, start and weed whack and all that stuff and and good taste or not.
Right, if it starts getting
Yep.
There, what?
Yeah, what about the maintenance side of it, you know, you're gonna have to have some, some component in there about maintenance that it's gotta look, uh, presentable, you know, throughout its lifetime, so.
But yeah, I think that's the thing, I, I'm not questioning the, you know, that it probably is not, you know, like I said, she's been part of the village, your town.
Right.
Um, but I just don't like haphazard coming in, that's
I totally agree with what you're saying.
And I had, remember, I had agreed with you
Yeah.
cause I was arguing.
I mean, I would expect the family would maintain it.
Yeah, I, I would too, I definitely, if, if I had something like that here for a loved one, I, I would gladly be out there taking care of it and maintaining it, so, and I would expect the same thing from them. I, I read a lot of the verbiage and, and the whole story and i- i- it was a beautiful request as far as I'm concerned. Sean, did you wanna add anything?
Sure, um, and, I mean, you know, we recently did this, you know, memorial at Kennedy Park and that's, that's one where, like Barb stated, I mean, that one we actually have an agreement. We did get some money for future maintenance and it was agreed upon about more future maintenance of the memorial.
Right.
The other part that you may not know about memorial requests is actually, they are, um, half, we ran through plan commission, cause they're in charge of memorial placement in the village. So, if you were wondering why it was planned commission, that is, so it's actually a couple committee and commission that, um, handle those, um, requests.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Alright.
I think as long as we get something, you know, I I was
Moving forward.
Before.
Okay.
I just don't like this.
Yep.
You have no guidelines as to what, you know, and how do you say yes to one and no to the other.
Well, and then, like we said, this board changes. And it's, it's, you know, it's, uh, the way it thinks all the time is, uh, it's hard for staff to handle at times, I would imagine. Um, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by Manel. On the discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, I, I just wanna say, um, I did realize my mic, this, you know, is our mic, and I had it way over here. So if yours is far away from where you're speaking, you might wanna just move it up close to where you are. Alright, uh. Alright, thirty-six, holding, Michael. Uh, ordinance is number forty-one. Is it good over there? Okay. Ordinance number twenty dash zero one four, in order to approve the rezoning of a thirteen point eight three acres along State Highway twenty-nine between Zinder Street and Progress Way from A R Agricultural and Residential to L I Limited Industrial. What's your pleasure? Then, do you have anything to speak on this?
Um, that's just the condo area.
Yep, okay.
Did not get rezoned and the conference of plan recommended it last summer, so if you guys did the conference of plan, you have the limit for it and it's just
Okay. Alright, thank you.
To approve?
Move to approve by Feeny.
Second.
Second by White, on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Number forty-two, ordinance number twenty dash zero one five, in order to amend sections ninety-four, point one, three, point oh two, parent nine, special exceptions. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by White.
Second.
Second by Manel. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, forty-three. Ordinance number twenty dash zero one six, in order to amend section ninety-four point one one within chapter ninety-four of the municipal code affecting landscaping standards, your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Move for approval by Manel.
Second.
Second by White. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? So carried, resolutions number forty-four, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero two seven. A resolution amending the village fee schedule. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve by White.
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number forty-five, resolution number two zero two zero dash zero two eight. A resolution to adopt the recommendations of the building committee. Resolution B C dash two zero two zero dash zero zero one, as amended. To proceed with the building project and continue the committee's role in the project.
So, I'll make
Oh, okay, so we get it up on the floor? Yes, is that, yes?
I was gonna say the amendment was to clarify that the building committee had acted to, uh, add back the second wash bay in the plans, because the plans don't reflect that second wash bay.
Okay.
That are referenced, so.
Okay, well, we have a motion by Ermeling to put it on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Zhong. And now on the discussion. Yes, Barb?
Um, I know in the planning committee, we had a to put the wash basin back into the
The building committee, yes, okay.
Um, Mr. Gao gave a very good argument. Um, to put it back in because, you know, and it, it made a lot of sense, but afterwards I thought about it, I thought, well, I'm not necessarily objecting to putting it back in, but I would like it to be an option when, uh, we're, when we're doing the bids, because I gotta, you know, we're gonna be making that office building smaller, I mean, that's one of the, you know, options. And I just look at that and I, I'm really concerned because I, I, I really think that we're compromising the building and it, but yet we're gonna put in this wash basin and that would be something we could add very easily if we have the plumbing in the floor. That would be something we could put on sometime later, and I just think this is, could be a savings. That would be something we could put on sometime later, and I just think this is, could be a savings, but I'm not saying we we shouldn't do it. I would just like it to be as, like some of the other things, that it would be an option.
But with.
You know, when we go out on bids, that that would be.
An alternate, yes. It's my understanding, Keith, that um, a a yea or nay vote tonight, um, you know, so let's say we, it's it's a majority that goes yes. There's still options throughout this process that we can change and do different things. All we're doing right now, if if a yes passes tonight. Is getting it to the bid process and the alternate and and the alternates and several options, uh, components, stuff like that, which Barbara was talking about.
But in our uh, building committee meeting.
Right.
We voted as to not be an option, we voted that it was part of that plan. And I'm asking it to be put back as an option.
Okay, uh, clarify.
There's two components to this wash bay. One is the bay itself, the actual. A space that has to be set aside of plum for drainage, drain.
Right.
And uh, and probably for water supply. And the second piece is the actual underbody wash equipment itself. Those are two. That underbody wash equipment, if I'm not mistaken, is in the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. That was the alternate that is still being requested based on the building committee recommendation.
Okay, I just.
It has to be designed, that factors in, being able to add this bay in without doing a lot of extra um demolition, say, of floors and. Not to add the drains, so um, just to clarify what what that actual building committee is.
Yeah, I want, I would want the the drainage and the water to be put there because. If you wanna add it on, you don't wanna be carrying up floors or whatever, but I guess I was under the assumption that it was actually we were putting back in the bay.
Only as an option.
We're putting.
Yeah.
We're adding the space, the bay with that drainage and the plumbing ready to. If if the automatic wash equipment is not added, then it could use a handheld or a, I should say, the uh.
The manuals, yeah.
The manual high pressure uh washers like you use currently.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Putting up the walls and all.
Yep, yeah, the two walls will be there. Lauren?
That was, I was gonna clarify, as far as I understood it, the actual physical structure would be there, but not necessarily the equipment.
Correct, correct. And 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 if that's the way it ends up and that gets approved by this board at a later date. Then we'd have the uh ability to wash four vehicles at the same time, because each one of the bays would have manual equipment to pressure wash uh manually, so.
But it's my understanding that part of the reason that that is done is because there is a ventilation concern about those particular structures, high moisture areas and you wanna get. The vapor out of there is, I think they're vented out, they don't vent through the entire building, they vent out in a separate place.
Right, yep.
All the air vents off through the uh, through the wash bay.
Yes, you know, a- along with that, we're also on on this, you know, possible bid is we have two different systems being looked at too, correct?
They're being looked at right now, we have to pop with the architect tomorrow or Wednesday, I'm sorry, because we met with the Focus on Energy on a virtual meeting on Friday.
Okay.
And uh, the the energy savings of both systems are relatively equal. But initial cost, the long term cost, that'll be looked at, so we're gonna clarify some things with the uh architect and the mechanical designer on that.
So that'll get back to the building committee and then back to board, okay?
Yes, that that was, that was the recommendation and the resolution was that that be brought back to the building committee for review.
Right. What's the cost difference from, between one uh wash bay and two? Hi, Michael, do you have that information?
I have to give me a few seconds, sure.
Yeah, he'll find it, give him a bit.
The cost of the block walls and plumbing in the.
The block walls, yep.
Plumbing in the floor and the ventilation and the heating.
Okay.
Whatever that moves to.
Okay, John?
Well, um, just on the question, and and I found it interesting that Mark said about the taxpayers, we we work for them and and do. Do everything for them, and yet this project doesn't have any input from the taxpayers since it's a public works project. And I think we're kinda hiding behind that fact that it's a public works project, and I'll be interested to see how it. How many calls we start getting once all of these uh FAQs come out and the letters come out. Cause there is, there are people out in the community and in my subdivision alone, I calculated what their their payment would be over the twenty years and. It's over eight thousand dollars in over twenty years and for the entire subdivision. That's a lot of money to know that the Village of Weston taxes are gonna go from twenty four hundred dollars to. Eleven thousand dollars by ten, this twenty years is done and I I just have a challenge with that. I have a challenge with the fact that. Our taxes went up five percent as a village and everybody else was flattered down when we're right in the middle of this pandemic. So I really think we need to start taking a look at that as well as this, as well as this building and seeing what. We indeed need as a building and what other options can be put out there. I just wanted to make sure I make that note.
Okay.
See, I also have concerns about the the cost structure. I I know that our consultants have indicated that if we borrow money a certain way to build this. And then we can refinance and those bonds, we don't need to go to a referendum, but it just seems that fifteen point five million dollars, it's an excessive amount. Um, I'm not real comfortable um with the process that we've gone through over the last year to to get to this point. I think um, Mort McBank should be commended. I I don't know how you stayed stayed as calm as you did. But it 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 really, it, there was, there were times where people were bringing up certain issues or or certain concepts that. Other people got overtalked or it kinda got put aside and Mort did a good job by keeping everybody involved. Um, unfortunately, I I don't think um, this is the building that we want. I I just feel like. There's a whole lot of space, a whole lot of extras on here. That are just, it's just excessive, it's just too much money, uh, and there's no real need for it. I I do feel that the village does need a a different building than what we have. I just don't think that this is the building that we should be looking at, especially at this cost, without having some type of referendum or some type of uh. Longer review process on here. That's just my concern or my views.
Okay.
I just had one.
Barbara?
And I don't know, maybe you can answer it, but um. Gary Garant had asked a question once at one of the things and later on, when we were all done, I thought, gee, I don't know if it ever got answered. He had talked about a different type of whatever we're putting on the outside, I wanna say siding, but it's not siding. It's it's got um little pebbles and it's got permanent.
It says spancrete, yeah, like a spancrete, right?
Tip up concrete walls?
Yeah.
I don't.
They're gonna actually use panels of concrete.
Okay.
Like they built Target with.
Okay, all right, and he was talking about, well, you could probably do something less expensive and just that at some point it had, would have to be painted. You know, periodically, and I don't know if we ever took and looked at that or not.
But architect had indicated that that was an option if you look at.
Okay, well, that's what I was just gonna ask, did that finally get to be an option? Because there was so much, you know, different options and and things come along and I wanted to make sure. Cause Gary, I got the feeling felt like we weren't looking at some of these suggestions.
I I agree with you, Barb, those are some of the questions, the same thing regarding, I mean, you had some questions about the. The locker rooms and how and whether it was too much or too big, there is also discussions as far as the lunchroom, training room that that may or may not be used. The showers that that were being added and that may or may not be used. All of those things were already decided, I felt, by the time we got our first meeting. I mean, granted, we do need to have a building, but I don't think that that those discussions fairly occurred. I as as everybody was discussing it, if it didn't refer back to what the study that was done four years ago, they didn't get answered. And the same thing is as far as having the the second story, do we need that second story or not? That was just the design that the architect had worked out with this, you know, village staff. And yet here we have a different parcel where you may not need the second story built that way and and. Once again, it just got dismissed and and I'm disappointed by that because I think that that it could have evolved differently. And and people could have contributed differently, so we had better understanding of that, but I don't think it's there right now. I don't have.
And I I agree with Steve and I I I truly think we're not gonna see this large growth coming out of this pandemic. It's not gonna just go away tomorrow, guys. It's just, it's just not, and I, I think we have this, this feeling that the Village of Weston is gonna be the growing metropolis coming up and I. I don't see that that's what the economists are forecasting or that's what's really gonna happen here, so I think the village is way too big.
Director Wodolski, uh, do you have an answer to my question yet?
Oh, the cost of the wash bay? Yep. Um, so a single wash bay structurally, based on the estimate, it says probably around a hundred and, say, forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Then the equipment itself was another two hundred and ten thousand. But if, um, I guess that's the wash bay, so if you don't, that'd be removing that completely space for space, so if you. Don't build that other exterior wall, I guess there, I I think it's hard to say it's exactly that amount, um, cause there'd still be some structure there. You know, you still have one wall for the other wash bay, so.
Is there uh, is there a realistic need for a second wash bay?
I I guess the question is always the growth, you know, right now we have one wash bay, you know, in nineteen sixty seven when that addition got put on. You know, at that point, somebody thought, hey, we need a wash bay, that it's a good idea for our building. You know, it's always the uh, the the space for the addition, so, you know, uh, at one point, the building committee. Said, let's reserve the space, but not build the wash bay, so you at least have that room so you can put a wall up in the future and you can add the plumbing in the future. The discussion then went from, no, we should just put the structure in there right away and ha- have that be ready, so.
What structure, the automatic?
Yeah, correct.
Oh, okay.
So, um.
I I thought that was.
Of the wash.
I thought the perimeter only, I thought the automatic was always an option.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay.
So if you. Do two things at once here.
Well, there's definitely a lot of questions and a lot of things um that we as a board do need to talk about uh with the building and. Whether or not all the space is justified or how we want to proceed, just uh, just because uh, this uh agenda item is strictly about the wash bay, I was. I was uh more uh interested in that singular issue at this moment, but yes, I've uh I've spoken with several members of the building uh committee. That are not trustees and there is quite a bit of frustration.
Mister President, um, I'm a big uh supporter of uh committee works, obviously my role as a county board supervisor here. I I guess um, my suggestion would be, there's, obviously, there's uh the, the board expressed a lot of concerns, you know, about minor details. I I it would be supportive, we can forward it back to the building committee to kind of review over those minor details instead of us as a board. Kind of chipping of those information, chipping and adding those information in, uh, or putting our own to sense, I I would be supportive of forwarding our concerns to the. Building committee and having them review and making those uh changes to it and then bringing it back to our board here, rather than us talking about this for the rest of the night. Just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Lauren?
So, this is the process to get this bid and everything. The bids can come back way too high, we can say, hold off, and that's why we offered. The alternate structures there, so that if we need to cut back, we can, if we need to cut back or leave out things, we can. But we're not gonna find out, right now, we're guessing as far as how much this is gonna cost, other than the fact that we bought the land, we're demolishing some things and there's some other things that know, that we've already spent. Plus the architect and engineering fees that we paid for. This could, is cut, should come back to us and say, hey, this is, this is a million dollars to watch, this is two million to watch. We're gonna go with the alternate plan, we're gonna reduce the office space, we're gonna, we're gonna take out certain things, but we had a lot of discussion, Mort's there, uh, uh, there are one, two. Three, four, five of us here that are on on the building committee and we hashed it out, including Mr. Sakami, who has a considerable experiment, experience in in. Commercial structures and in projects, um, and I got the impression from the committee is that we would lay this out for the trustees. Get a bid back, if we find out, holy smokes, this is too much, we can, then that was the reason for the alternate bid. This moves this along, um, if you see in one of the FAQs that came out, it talks about um, sounds kind of counterproductive. Talks about the cost of delaying that uh study that you mentioned by in your, about uh, it's cost roughly a. A half a million dollars per year, based upon what we are estimating at in two thousand sixteen, is that correct?
Yeah.
So just in the cost of low of of materials, labor has cost another two million dollars on this in. Yeah, and we talk about homeowners, I don't, my home is in the range, the median range though, where we talk about the data. So for me, it's just a proportional impact as to anybody else that has a three hundred thousand dollar house. Fortunately for me, mine's smaller and I can't afford it. I am on, as a a previous president said, I am on a fixed income, if you recall, who said that all the time? But like a lot of things that I pay profit to, I see the value because I see what it does for everybody, not just for me. So I I I don't know where we are in this particular process right now, Mr. Chairman, as far as, are we on the question?
Uh, you can call the question.
Real quick, the question in my mind is that we are not saying, yes, go ahead and build, right?
Correct.
The question in my mind is yes or no tonight, are we gonna move forward to the next process? So that we can either, uh, there's actually a point in this, that if we say yes tonight and and we get information back, we can pause this whole thing, we can go back to the drawing board.
Yes.
That's, that's where we are with this, that that would still be a yes vote tonight. A no vote stops everything. And it's gonna either go back to the building committee or whatever, but a yes vote just moves it along and and we can vote completely no. In unanimous at a certain point here and stop the entire project.
What was the?
Go ahead, Barb had her hand up, go ahead, Barb.
Well, I guess I wasn't questioning for, I, there is no way we could continue with this building. We need to do something, and one of the alternate was the fact of the smaller office space. I'll tell you right now, I don't like it, but if that was the only way we were gonna build a new building, I'd learn to like it, I guess. I think it's kind of short sighted, but um, and the only reason I was bringing up to make sure that we had the um. Wash basin as an alternate in there, because I, for whatever reason, I had it in my head that we just said we were putting it in again, not the automatic. Just the regular one, but I wanted that to be an an alternate, because if we have to start cutting back or doing things. This may be one of the things that probably would be easy enough at some point to put in if we don't put it in now.
Correct.
I mean, there's some things that would cost you more money, you know, if you did it, if you didn't do it now and did it later. That was the only thing I'm getting at, and I I wanna stress that until we get bids, we don't know where we are. And this is not saying we're going to do it, it's saying we're going to look at it.
Yep, Keith, did your hand up?
Yeah, I guess if I may, I'd like to respond to a couple of comments here from the trustees, with all due respect. I guess trustee Yee's suggestion to go after the committee, I do feel the committee has pretty much done its work in regard to what you've asked for. So I don't think sending it back there, in my opinion, is the thing to do, but that's just me. Trustee Ziegler's comment about the tax rate, we have estimated this on an average impact over a twenty year period. And if you compare it to like today's tax rate, it would be an average of three point six percent on the total tax rate for Weston. Not increasing every year, but three point six percent compared to what it may be this year. Now, every taxing authority around here has changes going forward, so I don't know what those are gonna do over time. The school district just passed a referendum, I don't remember what that impact was. And yes, they have a different standard, a different, a different process to follow. So I guess just in, I I'm not sure where your numbers are coming from, but I think we need, we could certainly sit down and talk to you about what those are along with finance director trolling if you like. But I think your statement about how much that's impacting the taxes over time is a little bit overstated. Um, I guess as far as one story versus two story, just from a practical.
Um, I guess as far as one story versus two story, just from a practical perspective, building, I think our architect even covered this in the meetings, it's, it's more sensible to build up than it is to have a more widespread footprint, just in terms of the, the plumbing, drainage and whatnot, it's all, it's all required for the building and you have much less rooftop to maintain. So, um, if that was not adequately covered, I guess I apologize, but I think that was somewhat, I thought it was somewhat cleared up during the meetings. Um, and if we're going to cut down on anything, we should be cutting down on the office building because I think if we cut down on the garage, it's the, it's the, it's not the thing that we need to do, it's not going to serve us. We need to get our vehicles in a spot so that our emergency response can be taken care of without delay. We have some issues with this building, I think everybody knows, with the garage, safety in the shop potentially. Um, and then there's other issues with this building as well, I think that we have all been made aware of. So we're trying to get information on, on all that as we go forward. So as we go to bid, we can try to do a much more better, much better job on public information, that's our intention going forward here. Um, so I guess my two cents worth on the process here.
Spread one last.
Okay, Martin, you have your hand up?
I was going to say, I think Mr. McBain can speak to some of this issues here. Also, being a citizen member of the building committee and chair.
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
You on here?
Hey, hello, please. Top, top.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and trustees of the village. Um, I'm going to take a few minutes to talk over some of the process that we used on the committee, okay? Because I can sense that there's a little uncertainty here and that's fine, it's perfectly understandable. Um, let me just take a minute and go back and, and remind everyone, what was the purpose of the building committee that was called together? And the charge that you issued to the building committee was as follows. We were to review the history of the project, review the condition of the existing facilities, that's right here, and the garage and so forth. We provide input on the building design. We were to provide input on public relations materials and assisting with the staff with public outreach. That means communicating with the public, with the village residents, what we're doing and we've started that process. And then ultimately, we are to report our findings to you as, as a board. From the perspective of the committee, we have accomplished the first three. And tonight, we're reporting on number five, reporting what we have discovered and what we are recommending to you. And I, I'll just, uh, short circuit the discussion a little bit by telling you that many of the questions that you have raised tonight and the, and the concerns have been dealt with in detail by the building committee. That was our job. We started from square one with, most of us had no knowledge of the plan at all. We were just given a, 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 a plan and said, this is what the village is planning to do. We'd like you to review it, take a look at the existing facilities, direct, and then recommend what we're, what we're to do with this plan. And that's what you have in front of you in the resolution. Um, we met, formally, we met eight times and each of those meetings was at least two hours long and some of them were considerably longer. That's two months of meeting with your citizens' building committee. Some of you were on that committee and some former trustees were on there and, and many, uh, quite a few citizens are on there. Local businessmen and people like myself are retired and we spent a whole lot of time looking at this plan. And we went through a lot of those issues that you are discussing right now. We, we went through in detail about the wash base. At one point, we decided, let's get rid of the one wash bay with the automatic wash equipment. Now, that meeting, Mr. Dwayne Gao, who was a former highway commissioner and who's had his career in these buildings, in these operations, he was not at that meeting when we pulled the wash bay out. The following week, he, he attended the meeting after having read the minutes and he gave us an education on why you need two wash bays, one of them with automatic washing equipment. And it was pretty obvious to us that we had messed up. Uh, uh, and I'm not saying that you are, you're doing that, but I'm, I'm saying that unless you understand the function of a wash bay and a public works garage, you may make the wrong decision, thinking that, well, this is expansive, they don't need two wash bays. Well, when you get into it in detail, you realize, okay, here's, here's the way it was explained to me. Um, the reason you have two wash bays is that the first one is an automatic wash. When these trucks come in from snow plowing, eight hours, they are packed, packed with snow and ice. All the undercarries, just imagine, this is not like driving your car in the snow. This is a snowplow out there for eight hours. And you've, you've, you know what these snowplows look like when they're plowing the highways? I mean, they're just covered in a foot of ice and snow and it's all packed in. So when they come in at night, they have to be, that snow has to be cleared off or it'll freeze overnight and then they can't operate them in the morning. So they take them to the automatic wash bay, that gets most of the mud and the gunk off, then they move them over to the manual wash bay and they hand remove all of the ice and snow from on the undercarriage. That's why you need two wash bays. We didn't know that until Mr. Gao came and explained it to us as a highway commissioner, public works director, this is how it works. So our feeling as a committee is we can save you a lot of time. We've already gone through these issues in detail. And so if you have questions about some of those things, I would be glad to try and answer them and Mr. Gao can answer, Mr. Sakami can answer some of these questions. He's got a lot of experience in building issues and, and architectural work and, and we've spent a whole lot of time on your behalf. And our efforts were done to, to save you some time and provide you some confidence that some review has been done, an intensive review of this project has been done on your behalf, not by, not by the village staff, not by your snowplow drivers, although they're all important employees, but done by a citizens committee who knew nothing of the project, came on to the, but some of us have a lot of background in public projects. Um, so we know how this process works and we've tried to help you the best we can by spending a lot of time going over this and making recommendations. And as, as, uh, as Mr. Maloney has said, your vote tonight is not a final vote on the project, you're, you're voting to move forward to the bid process. That's when you will find out how much this project will potentially cost. Right now, they're all estimates. They're good estimates, but they're only estimates. There are many factors that are going to come into play when we go to bid. That's when your final decision will be made. That's when you will have some alternates to look at to reduce the price of the project. And we've, we've factored in some alternates for you to consider. That's your job. Our job was to give you a basic package and review it and say, we agree that this is the package that you need, but, um, here are some alternates to look at that could reduce the price for you also, because there will be concerns about the cost of this project. But for, to say, well, this, this fourteen million or fifty, that's just too much, that really doesn't help. We need to go really specific and that's what we did as a committee. We, we went through a lot of discussion, why do we have to spend this much money? Well, after eight weeks of discussing this in detail, it's pretty obvious, most of the committee realizes, this is the kind of project you have to have. This is the project that will meet the needs of the village going forward for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. Um, this is a huge project. This is the biggest thing that the village has done in fifty years. So, so it's perfectly understandable that there are some concerns, you're going to get some calls, you're going to get some, some messages, you're going to, irate taxpayers that saying, why are we spending? Our job is to try to convince you and explain to you, this is for the future. We are a growing village. We are, the data is there. We've been growing for the last fifteen, twenty years, we're still growing. And once this pandemic thing is gone, that's, that's not going to make any difference. This village is a growing entity. We have, we have serious issues with the growth in this village. And I, as a citizen, will tell you that I'm, I'm more than happy to, you know, contribute to whatever it takes to get this done because I, I've lived in this village probably as long as most of you, some of you perhaps not. Um, but I'm proud of this village, I think it's a great village, it's a great place to live, I'm proud of this community. And I love to see us moving forward with our eye on, on the future because we are, we are the fastest growing community in, in the whole county. Um, and I served the county for twenty-two years and I've gotten involved in a lot of building projects and this one, I think, is a great project. And I am perfectly willing, uh, uh, you'll notice that on our, I don't know if you've seen this yet, but our flyer that we're putting out is going out probably then tomorrow, um, we are encouraging people to talk to us. So, so most of us on the committee, not all, but most of us said, put our names on here, we want people to call us. People like, like you and like your neighbors, if they have questions, call us and we'll explain why, why we're doing this and why this costs this much and whatever, all these details. People don't know, uh, they, they don't know how these things work. Um, there's been some talk of a referendum. First of all, we, we don't need to have a referendum, it's not required and that's, that's a good thing. I've been involved with some public referendums and my personal opinion of a referendum is if you don't need to do it, then you probably shouldn't unless you're absolutely genuinely confused as to know what to do. If you don't, absolutely don't know what to do, then you have to turn to the citizens and ask them, okay, what should we do with this? But think about that for a minute. If you don't know what you should do, how are you going to turn to citizens who know nothing about the project and ask them for their advice? What are you going to get? I can tell you what you'll get. People will be confused, they'll be, they'll be overwhelmed by it and they'll say, oh, it's too big, yeah, we can't handle this, vote no. That's what happens when you ask citizens who don't know about the project for their advice. They'll simply say, well, don't do it, it's too much money, not even understanding the project. So, uh, that's the first part, the reason why you don't want to have a referendum. Um, secondly though, you need to just consider why you were elected. Why, why were you elected to office? Um, and I'll, I'll answer that for you. You know the answer. Most of you would agree. You were, you were elected to serve. You wanted to serve your community as a, a wonderful thing. It's a noble, noble endeavor to be willing to give time and, and energy to your community for the betterment of the community. That's why you were elected. Now, that comes along with some responsibility. Um, but you were elected to make decisions on behalf of the citizens who could not be here tonight. You can't run a democracy that way. So you elect a, a group of people to represent you, whether it's the village or the state assembly or congress. You, you represent the people, you represent the citizens out there and your obligation is to be leaders, to lead your community forward. This is a great project that does that, it leads this community forward with a wonderful project that's going to really match our growth and it's really necessary for this community. And the size and the, the, the bits and pieces of this project are not that important. The important thing is that you're looking down the road thirty to forty years, way past elections, and saying, this is for the good of the community, we need to just do this, exercising leadership. So we are asking you as a committee to exercise your leadership responsibilities to, to support this project. And, and again, it's not the final vote, that will come when you get the bids in. But until we get to that stage, we, we've got to move forward or we're stuck. Till those bids come in, you don't really know how much it's going to cost. Then you can get into some discussions about alternates and can we cut some things here and there, can we send it back to the committee? Uh, that, that's perfectly fine, you can do that, but first of all, you need to exercise your responsibility, get this going, get this started, give the architect, you know, your responsibility to move forward and get the bids. Then we'll have something to talk about when they come in and that'll be the next phase, okay? And I'll just stop, stop there and see if there are questions.
Uh, Barb?
Yeah, I guess, first of all, I just, um, when I brought up the bay, the wash basin, I did talk to Michael and, um, we talked to find out, you know, if we only had the one with the two washes, how that would, you know, go. And I just felt after talking to him and going that, that I wanted it as an alternate. I guess I didn't realize that it was still considered an alternate, I thought it had been just put in the plan.
Right.
And I, I wanted to make sure it was an alternate and I want to state, also, I've heard different times about referendum and every time I hear that, I just cringe because, okay, if you go out there for a referendum and they vote it down, what are we going to do? This building is not going to be work for us. It, it, it's way past its useful as for the village. So then we go back to the drawing board and we come up with something else and do we go for referendum again? What are, are we going to build it even though they told us no? I mean, to, to me, a referendum is, um, we got to take ownership of what we're doing. And to me, a referendum is, I don't want to say cheating, but to me it is because I'm going to give you an example of what a referendum with citizens that are not knowledgeable completely what we're doing. We had a referendum forced on us to get bus service. They voted for us to get bus service and turned it down to fund it. I mean, that is what happens. I mean, I'm not saying that the citizen shouldn't have a right to, to voice their opinion and, and we're inviting them to. But in reality, we need a new, what, I've been fighting for this for I don't know how many years, to get this going. And four years ago, I thought we were going to actually make some progress. And well, what, for whatever reason, there was some questions about different things and it's cost us a couple of million dollars to, four years later. And I guess I just want to find out what this is going to cost and if we've got alternatives, if we're looking at it, we can still change and make it some of the things that we don't like. If, if the prices are too much, we still can, yes, I still question all the shower rooms and some of the other things, but that may be something if the price is too high, we can still look at. It isn't like we're saying we're going to go out and build this building just because we can. Not that way. That's my last.
Uh, Dong, you had your hand up and then?
Mr. President, um, so.
And then here.
First and foremost, I just want to thank Chair McBain for expressly, further expressing, um, you know, obviously addressing and bringing up the fact that many of the concerns of the trustees has been discussed at the, uh, you know, at the committee. Obviously, I didn't, I wasn't at the committee meeting, so I didn't know if they were being addressed, that's why I brought up the discussions of all referring the concerns of the trustees back to the committee, in the committee. But if the committee feels, feels that it has been addressed, you know, I, 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 I trust the opinion, I trust the, uh, the, basically the recommendation from the committee because we, into we, we developed this committee so that we can trust, uh, put out the work, we obviously tasked them with the task and trust them that they would be able to come up with the proper recommendation. So I would be more than supportive of this, uh, since, since the committee did review it. The only second thing I want to bring up is that, um, I know that trustee Ziegler brought up some concerns about the taxes, uh, and the cost. If Keith, uh, Mr. McDonald, if you can get those accurate information, as you said, to, to the rest of the committee, to rest of, the rest of the board, it would be greatly appreciated as well too, uh, so that that way, we're also knowledgeable as well and when we do talk with our constituents, we can address that as well.
Uh, Steve?
I, I have a, I feel I need to clarify my comments that I made here and I, the committee did do a, a, a review of the, the plans. They did look into it. Um, it's unfortunate that we, we were forced in this eight week or ten, ten weeks, well, a more, a period of time to review the plans that have been pending since last year. The contract was signed in like January, if my, is my understanding, February, whenever it was. But nothing got shared with any of the board members, nobody was involved in any of those But nothing got shared with any of the board members. Nobody was involved in any of those discussions. So when I'm looking at these different things and we were asking questions about what, you know, what is needed and why it was needed, we, we seem to be put in a situation where we're approving what the architect designed with only dealing with the employees. And there was no input from a cost standpoint, in my feelings, by, by my review and my look at this. Do we really need to have shower rooms? Do we really need to have that large recruiting room when we have a, a boardroom that's even bigger? You know, why duplicate things that we don't need? And what I'm saying is, is that was crammed into such a short period of time that I don't think it was given a, a fair review. And what we're doing is we're confirming what the employees want to have in this building. And that's my feeling. I'm sorry I have that. I wish it would have been different, but I certainly wish we could have reviewed this back in March or April or May and started to have more involvement in it at that time. And, and it wa, it, it wasn't presented that way. And even when there was a little, there was, I think, one meeting where they did make some changes, I don't think it was given a fair shake because those, those changes that were made condensed everything into what we, the problem we have right now. And there was no review of should some of the seasonable equipment be put someplace else under different conditions? And I'm just saying, it was all or nothing and I'm just not comfortable with that.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Last hand up here?
One of the first things that I did as a trustee was to meet with all of the department heads and Administrator Donner so that I could better understand how each department worked and the size of the building. And I remember walking into Director Crowe's office and saying, wow, you work in a closet. Yeah, I, I am so, I agree with what trustee Ermeling said. The need, the need for a new building is without question. I just wanted to confirm a few things and took it and thought that this would be the most appropriate place to do it. So I'd actually like to call the question for this agenda item.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion has been made by trustee Feeny to call the question and seconded by trustee White. And I, I don't believe there's a vote on that, correct? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Wait, just, sorry.
If you want a roll call instead, would it be easier?
If you want to call for a division of assembly.
I, I do. I just want the clarification though. This voting is for the end, to call to the end of question.
Correct.
Correct. So it's not really a vote. Just want to clarify.
It's just, I'm sorry, I should have said that. It's just for the end of discussion. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? So more discussion, okay? So the ayes have it and the call has been taken. So now we have a motion on the floor and can clerk remind me who made the motion and seconded it?
It is Ermeling, motion made by Ermeling, seconded by John.
Thank you very much. So the original motion to either approve or not approve this resolution is by Ermeling and by Zong. On the question.
I have a question for actually trustee Ermeling. If you want, you can amend the motion to make the, the second wash bay.
I'm sorry, what?
She can amend the motion to change the resolution to make the second wash bay an option.
I thought that's.
That's what she, I, I thought it is an option.
Okay.
I thought that's what Keith said.
I, I understand there's a, a whole bunch of options.
Okay, well.
And components, and that is one of them.
Okay. All right. Just that one.
I just, I want to confirm now that you said that. Now that second wash bay is an option, right?
Equipment for the second wash bay has to be automatic wash.
Yes, the two hundred and fifty thousand is, is a, is an option to make it automatic or to not.
It's just the regular wash bay and the equipment is whatever.
So that's, you can understand my confusion on this now.
Well, right.
So if these bids come back and if I can, if I'm speaking on a turn, I'm sorry, but if these bids come back in, in a, a non, that we're not going to approve it, we're going to have to whittle away or change it or start over.
Exactly.
That, that's how I, I'm confident about how I'm going to vote.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted to put that wash basin, second wash basin as an option. So at some point, we can do a comparison.
Yeah, okay.
So if, I don't know.
So, just to clarify, your.
Can we be talking right now with the call of question? Yes, we can.
No.
We've called the question. And I, I think we want to call the question. I, do, do we feel that we want to have a roll call vote?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll request a division of the assembly by roll call vote.
All right, thank you. So if you're voting yes, you're moving along the, the resolution from what the committee said, building committee, and we're moving the project along to the next phase. If you're voting no, you're stopping it at this point. All right, clerk? Wine cloth?
All right, Ermeling?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Minell?
No.
White?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Ziegler?
No.
All right, so motion, excuse me, resolution is passed to five to two?
Yes.
There we are. We are finished with forty-two.
Thank you everyone for the discussion.
I, I do want to say a thank you to the committee members that are here tonight. And I attended every one of them along with the administrator. And Mark, hats off to you. I was happy to get you on board. I've talked to you over the last year, year and a half about this project here and there. And when you said yes and then you were nominated, I, I was very pleased that we had your, your public service in, in the background too. So thank you very much.
Shane, do you have something you want to say?
Shane was certainly there too. I, I didn't mean to miss you and Dwayne, but.
I know I'm out of, out of, I'm not on the agenda, but trustee Amory asked about the type of outside of the structure. And Green Act Field House is precast concrete cannot paint. And I strongly recommend that because it's easier to construct it, it's faster and it's minimum maintenance on.
Okay.
That building in the corner from here, that is machinery block. And I have to paint it every eight to ten years. And even before that, it was discoloring and causing trouble. So I just wanted to.
Yeah.
So my recommendation is to go.
Okay, thank you Shane. And just a real quick here before we start, I did get, I, if you saw me on my phone, I wasn't talking to my wife. But it was Chief, oh, for heaven's sakes. Savage. And he was trying to get on with the call about the sirens not working. So he does have an answer. I thought maybe he would text me, but he has not. I think he might be still listening, but he couldn't get on Nate. So for some reason he couldn't, but he, he'll definitely answer your question on that. So just wanted everybody to know that he was on. All right, new business. Yay. Forty-six, site plan for Norcon Corporation at ninety-one oh two Progress Way. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling, seconded by Feeny. On the question. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-seven, development agreement and property sale for Norcon Corporation at ninety-one oh two Progress Way. What's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny, seconded by Minell. On the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-eight, engineering services contract amendment for Weston School Neighborhood East Project.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by White, seconded by Zong. On the, on the question. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Forty-nine, change order number two for the Weston School Neighborhood East Project.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Zong, seconded by Feeny. On the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty, request to utilize TIF district funds for Schofield Avenue pavement repairs and reallocate capital improvement funds for the repaving of Ross Avenue East of County Road X. Hand up first by White, second by Ermeling.
On the question?
On the sec, on the discussion.
So reading through that, can you kind of give us a Reader's Digest, a large print senior version of this? Because I found it a little confusing.
Yeah, oh. So Schofield Avenue, we replaced several concrete panels of the pavement this past summer. As part of the budget process, also this fall, we discussed using TIF monies to upgrade or redo our infrastructure within the TIF districts. So with that, that work was originally borrowed for as part of our twenty-twenty borrowing. So I guess instead of using borrowed funds for that, the request is to use TIF funds for those repairs that were made and then reallocate the borrowed funds for the repaving of Ross Avenue heading east from County Road X towards Muster Street. And then also as part of that, we had a grant or currently do have a grant from the DOT for the repaving of Kramer Lane from Guzman to Trotzer, which is also later on the agenda. That was a joint agreement with the town of Weston. The town lost their grant for that project due to receiving monies for another project in the town. So we wouldn't be able to necessarily utilize the full amount of our grant if it stayed tied to Kramer Lane. So I guess the part of the other request is to reallocate that grant monies to Ross Avenue so we can fully utilize the grant money too from the state to maximize the amount of street we can repay it.
That help? Thank you.
That's okay.
Someone?
Just one thing to follow up on that. So when we have the opportunity to, because we haven't been taking on projects and especially in TIF district number two and we can reallocate to to utilize those, that available capital, this does help us get more done.
Thank you.
Things will be agreed.
Okay.
Finance to bring these things individually as they come up each year.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Cherry, you're okay with the motion and second after the discussion? Okay, thank you. Fifty-one, forty-seven oh seven, Camp Phillips Road, former G and B Produce Building, demolition project award.
Move toward the G and B Produce Building demolition project to Jean Ferguson Trucking Incorporated for bid price not to exceed seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Motion by White?
Second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion. I have a little discussion on that. That was originally at about a hundred and fifty grand. So that's a seventy-five thousand dollar savings. I, I think that's phenomenal. So that's, however that worked out, where's this company from?
One thirty actually it was, but.
One thirty, okay.
Company's from Appleton?
Oh, no.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Thanks for taking a little bit of my, you know, flair out of it. You could have said nothing.
It's still fifty-five thousand.
Yep, it's still fifty-five thousand. You, I stand corrected. So good job. Out of a corner, right?
That's usually me, Mark.
So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty-two, Siberian's Drive Street Light Request.
I move to approve for Public Works and Utility Committee recommendations.
Move by White, seconded by Feeny. On the discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty-three, FTF Purchase Option and Development Grant Agreement.
I guess the question here is whether the board agrees with the assessment that if the, if FTF needs this, the clause in the, in the development agreement provides for the village allowing them to take up to seventy-five, I'm sorry, at least seventy-five hundred cubic yards of fill from our Orion Street set. We are saying that's not available to them. And there was a value placed on this material in the agreement. So in lieu of the material being furnished to them or being, or them being allowed to take the material, we would just provide them the value, five dollars per cubic yard as stated in the agreement for anything that they, that we do not furnish them. And I guess, you know, the, the president may be arguing with me a little bit that we, we have committed to the seventy-five hundred regardless, based on the clause of the contract.
Be present?
I said.
Be present?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
I guess I have touched base with them and said, you know, we're only going to provide you up to what you need based on your site plan. So just perhaps asking if you have a different take on that. I guess I'll, I'll approach it that we're only going to furnish them up to what we need. So I guess if it gets argued, we can come back and talk about that.
Is, is he buying, is he buying the lot?
Yes.
It's part of the, he's going to, he's going to close it?
By what?
By the maturity date?
That's what he has indicated he will do.
He just has to exercise the agreement by January fifteenth. He has to exercise the agreement, the option for purchase by January fifteenth.
And does that hold him? Is that, is that tea?
But then he builds it within two years, I believe, is what the.
Right.
They're wanting to start right now. So we've got plans. They're asking us to move dirt and we've been talking to them for the last three, four months saying the way the agreement was written, you basically have to have your site plan and be ready to, to close on the property within that thirty, it said fifteen to thirty days of exercising the agreement. I, I'm not really sure why that got put in there like that. Is it, I mean, it's hard to, to do that, but they're working on it. We have a general site plan that we received last Friday. There are some changes to it. Plan cushion should see it in February because they haven't actually designed the building yet. So that's kind of what the hang up is, is they've got the site layout, but they don't have any of that building elevations to show anywhere. They're not needing the whole lot. It is eight acres. Originally, when they had talked, and this might have been when Dean was there, I had kind of carved off a small lot. And then it went to this agreement where they were going to be providing or buying the whole lot. They're putting up a sixty-two thousand square foot addition to the property, but the majority that's coming on that property is just going to be kind of like a truck, a truck base and turnaround area because he still has quite a bit on his current lot. So that was some of, we weren't sure at first if he wanted the whole lot, but it looks like that's what he wants.
The agreement is written for them to acquire the whole lot. If they were to reopen the agreement, perhaps we would revisit that.
Okay.
There'd probably be three acres or.
So if he doesn't.
Twenty-five acres that may be available yet that's not, that's not needed for their development.
So if they don't buy it by the fifteenth, then you're considering that they're going to open their agreement to renegotiate it?
Finish it, then we, I think we have the option to reopen it. That would be something that we would want to consider other than.
Okay. All right. So we are still here with.
We're just taking the stance that we'll provide them what they need, what they may, we'll provide them the five dollars per cubic yard for what they may need.
Okay.
Based on their proof of how much fill they need for their site.
Okay.
If they want to argue that, we'll have to come back and.
Okay.
I think the motion is consistent with, to be consistent with what Administrator Donner recommended.
Okay, motion by Zong, seconded by Ziegler. On the question? Anymore? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Fifty-four, Terms of Agreement with Town of Weston for Kramer Lane Pavement Overlay.
Let's piggyback on what Director Rodolfski said, so I don't know if you had any questions on that.
Okay, motion by Ermeling, seconded by, excuse me?
Friendly, I think there was a comment about an addition of a sunset clause in that agreement because they're correct? Because it's, it is, from reading it, it said that there was an open-ended agreement and there was no sunset on it.
They plan on doing this immediately next year, don't they?
Well.
But there's no.
They're, they're saying that there would be a balance of what they might commit to the reconstruction, I guess.
Oh yeah, you're right.
Reconstruct it and it's going to cost a lot more. We would want to go back to them and stay.
Right, that, that's if the water comes across or, or when it comes across and possibly getting some more land from the town of Weston.
But to go with what trustee White said, there's no, there's no concrete sunset clause in there yet about the conclude. Am I understanding this correct though?
And there, and it was a recommendation in the rest of, for consideration, as I recall.
It's the last sentence, sunscreen. Yeah, I, because I would be supportive of a sunset clause as well, you know, I guess, but there, I, I guess I would, but then I would not be comfortable voting on this if we don't have a concrete date.
Can we have a date on this? I mean, do we know enough when that water may come across and all the utilities?
If we're crossing the river, the plan is next year, then other extensions may be depending on development. I would think something like a ten-year sunset clause would be reasonable.
Would that be reasonable? Is that acceptable?
I, I'm not an expert. I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
But at least it's there.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So the motion. Okay, all right, so the motion was made by.
Ermeling.
Ermeling, and with that caveat in there?
Yes.
Okay, and the second by you, uh, Feeny. Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Fifty five, insurance proposal from LWMMI, comma, MPIC and United Heartland for liability auto property workers compensation and crime coverage insurance. Uh, Wine cloth?
Yes, um, so the proposal that I included in the packet um for the the liability, the auto, the property, the workers' comp, um, that came in and I attached it, uh, one fifty six, one one six. And then I I had a conversation with our insurance agent after I provided this to you, and I had asked them to explain why there was um why there was such a big change between the uh between the policy expiring twenty twenty and the twenty twenty one for the auto physical damage, because that went from ninety seven eighty eight up to thirteen four oh nine, and I I just thought that was a big jump. And he had explained to me that it, it was mostly because we put, we added a lot of new vehicles this last year. So I went back to see how many new vehicles, and and maybe Michael can confirm it or Sean, but I counted uh six new vehicles that we added. So that was the increase for the auto physical damage, so they, they didn't uh move that number at all. But they did um, they did come down for me on the property. It wasn't a whole lot, but a little bit is better than nothing. Um, they came down uh, well, twelve hundred dollars. So the new proposal on the liability auto uh bridges, all that good stuff, is now at one fifty four, eight sixty one. He also said that um.
That's because the property went down, Bert. Yeah. She just doesn't have it in here yet.
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't have this on Friday. I, this just came in, I just got this today, so I apologize.
So the new number is one fifty four?
One fifty four, eight sixty one.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other, he just also wanted to add another reason for the increase uh from last year versus this year was um there was an increase uh to the value of the water slide. He mentioned that as well, and so they, that was another reason for the increase. Um, so yeah, so that's where we're at, one fifty four, eight sixty one.
Okay, Michael has hand up real quick.
So the increase due to the new vehicles was just because it's a newer vehicle than what was.
Right, right.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, so we didn't have.
Value you see is more, more to replace, more to fix for damage.
And even though we did, you know.
We got rid of.
We got rid of some, it it put a whole lot more, you know, a whole.
Value.
Yeah, we got.
Value.
They're insuring more.
Yes, correct, yep.
So um, help me with where, where are we here?
I'll move to approve the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance Proposal and Crime Coverage Proposal in the amount of hundred and fifty four thousand eight hundred and sixty one.
Motion by White, second, second by Feeny on the question, Mr. Zong.
Two question. Um, I guess the first one is, um, are we able to take this up for bid? I guess just, you know, obviously I lack the knowledge on this, so just kind of question, are we able to take these up for bid, and if we can, is that possible?
Um, yes, it is possible. Um, I guess we we talked to them back in October to kind of see where our numbers were at the time. And actually, it was, it's kind of looking like the numbers would come in good, and and we wouldn't have to worry about a big increase. And we're real happy with the league service. Um, I can tell you, in the past, we used to bid it out every year. And it really is a lot of work to go out for bids, as as most of you know. And so I was always told by um insurance agents, you know, if you can, if you're happy and you can see where you're at, you know, there's no reason to go out for bids unless these numbers, you know, come in. And we didn't see that back in October, when we talked to them about it, so we didn't go out for bids.
But the second question I have is, um, is this in you, the League of Municipality, uh, is that run by the League of Municipality organization in the state of Wisconsin here as well, too? Because I think if it is, then I may have to abstain myself from this.
Yes, it's the league's insurance.
Okay.
Yes, except um, MPIC is is not, that is a separate company for the property insurance. That is not the league's insurance.
For the.
And United, obviously, United Heartland is is not the league's insurance either.
So we vote on this, will, can we split it up and vote on it separately of its own?
I I I would just abstain.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just, I think that would just.
It's to abstain.
That would just clear everything.
Okay.
I think that'd be even uh probably more proper.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to add, Warren, and I know you made the motion, is that I did have that uh Travelers um quote included, and I I think that was increased on the insurance of um like sixteen hundred or something like that. We were going from Liberty Mutual to Travelers, it was an increase of seven or eight hundred dollars, there you go, seven hundred and thirty eight.
Okay.
And so that was actually over in a, that's over and above this um one fifty four, eight sixty one.
Okay, so.
So it'll be one fifty four, eight sixty one plus the sixteen twenty.
Sixteen twenty?
Yes.
I'll just wait for a minute for Lauren to get the calculations done. And.
I originally had these totals, but.
No, that's good, they came late in game, yep.
Well, it's pretty close to where we started. So technically, uh in order to to clear this, we would have to amend the uh motion.
Sorry.
So.
Feeny? Someone will have part of this, right? Or Zong?
Hopefully it wasn't.
Okay, so does Feeny, okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, I wish to withdraw my motion and restate it.
I withdraw my second.
All right, thank you.
I would like to restate the motion, uh, move to approve the League of Wisconsin Municipality's Mutual Insurance Proposal and Crime Coverage Proposal in the amount of one fifty six, four eighty one.
So move.
I will second.
Second by Feeny. On the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Abstain.
Uh, yes, make sure that we note that uh he is abstaining from there. Thank you. Just trying to, okay, here we are, fifty six, special revenue fund balance.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeny on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Fifty seven, transfer uncollectible accounts to state debt collection program.
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Feeny, second by Ziegler. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Fifty eight, update accounts receivable policy.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling, second by Minell on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. And tonight, this is the one we've been looking for. Fifty nine, last one, long term access to four lots on Weston Avenue east of Camp Phillips Road to minimize future traffic conflicts.
Chairman, I move to recommend shared access as proposed by the planning commission.
So uh for a motion by White, second, second by Feeny on the discussion.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Please note that uh Steve Min, trustee Minell is abstaining from that. So carried. Uh, any attorney referrals?
I have uh either here or under the.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
I have been contacted by the village council requesting that I meet with him concerning the source materials that I used in the development of the recently adopted two chapters. So I just wanted to let you know that I did, he did contact me, I did respond, I'd be willing to meet with him whatever time.
As a board, we all approved it, we we thought that that should happen, so Lauren just wanted to be transparent, let us all know.
Thank you.
Uh, remarks from trustees, how about Lauren?
Uh, nothing other than uh Merry Christmas.
Okay.
Here, stay safe, stay well, and stay on the green side of the dirt.
There you go, all right, uh, trustee Ermeling?
Same, just Merry Christmas.
Who isn't a very festive garment tonight that uh none of us had enough uh to wear? Yep, even jingle bells, I've got them on my truck, I didn't bother to bring them in here.
What things got me is I, there was ones on the ear.
Yeah.
It's also on, if I do something, I can do.
Yeah, my, my first one broke, so I don't, I don't wear them anymore. Trustees, so first and foremost, I just want to thank Administrator Donner and also President Maloney for doing a um Happy Month New Year shout out video, and uh it was broadcast to about fifty thousand monthly individuals from all over the same country here, so we all heard it, and there was several month, there was probably about a thousand monthly individuals that messaged me. I lived in Village of Weston here, who said they were very happy to see the Village of Weston. They participate, when, when I called Keith up, it was our pleasure, absolutely our pleasure, thank you very much for the invite.
Well, I thought it was great, and then lastly, I, there was a Merry Christmas, there's a Happy New Year, and I will Happy Month New Year.
Just so you know, it was only thirty two tapes. If it wasn't one or the other one, we couldn't do it, and Nate helped us with the phone, but we got it done, so thank you, it was our pleasure. Trustee Ziegler?
Yeah, I just want to make it known that I know the building needs to be done, and I attended every one of the building committee meetings just as a trustee, not as a member of the committee, so Mort saw me every, every time that the committee was there, I just wanted to voice my concerns or challenges that I have, and thanks for Mort for going over uh everything at the end, and I'll look forward to keep uh, and Jessica going over the actual dollars. I think I'm pretty close, but I may be off in that.
Thanks, okay. Uh, trustee Feeny?
Uh, I'd like to thank uh everyone on the building committee for doing a phenomenal job. Uh, especially uh Mr. McBane for all of his tireless efforts, and from what I hear, uh, without you, it would have uh every, it would have crashed and burned. Um, for.
Singed a little bit.
And uh a very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. The year that won't end is almost over, just like my trustee remarks.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
And trustee Minell?
No, I do want to thank you personally, I mean, I I'm just very happy with how you handled everything and really do appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, on my behalf, I just want to thank staff, um, all, all the people that put all this together uh with the building committee here tonight with some representation and Mort. Uh, I want to absolutely a nice shout out to the building committee, it was a a quick service. I I believe it's going to continue for a bit, um, but uh, I, you know, we work hard, we work hard, we try to do it right. As Mort said, uh, you know, we're leaders, we're elected to these positions, and there's times we we don't agree, and there's times that we do, so um, every opinion is important, regardless of which way it is, and there's a lot more to follow on this building, but uh with that being said, Merry Christmas to all. Uh, thank you uh for allowing me to be in this position, and um, Happy New Year and safe, as uh Lauren said too, so thank you all very much. And with that, future items. Next meeting date, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one, Board of Trustees, regular meeting at six P M. Yes.
Just to clarify.
Yep.
So the plan is they have a joint meeting of Public Works on the eleventh for the master plan.
Yep.
Presentation, that's not on here.
Okay.
Um, I guess deserves to do that rather than do it on the night of the regular uh board meeting.
I think there's a joint finance meeting on the eighteenth.
Yes, I thought there was too. Yeah.
Just to make sure we're clear.
Okay, so January eleventh.
Right.
We are going to be meeting jointly with.
Oliver.
The Works, okay, can't wait. January eighteenth, and then February fifteenth, uh, regular scheduled meeting, uh, with no other planned business.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Zong, and uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Oh, I love.